I had to sign. It's on air. All right, ready? You have your second debate.
All right, you don't need to tell anything, huh?
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you to this August regular meeting of the Board Trustees of the Alabama Community College System. And we're so very glad to be here in North Alabama, in the Morgan County, Decatur, Limestone County area, here on Calhoun Community College Campus. And our thanks for the great welcome that we received. Dr. Cawker and his staff, they've just been the most accommodating and just great host force. And especially our two board members from the area, from the Decatur area, Crystal Brown and Blake McAnally and his wife Patty, they've been most hospitable to us and we value you as fellow board members, but we do appreciate your graciousness and hospitality y'all have shown us since we've been here. It's just a great part of the state and we're just so pleased to be up here and look forward to seeing more of Calhoun, rather than here on campus and learning about all the great things that are being done here and all the things that are being done to help our students and help our citizens. We will have our invocation that will be given by Blake McAnally, our trustee at large, and then followed by the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Crystal Brown, District Five trustee.
Mr. Thompson wanted to sort of go back and do things a little bit differently than we have begun to move the past year in that whomever gives the invocation may do a little bit of a devotional or just a thought. And I have something prepared today for you. 1849 Zachary Taylor was to be sworn in to be the next president of the United States. March 4th was the day that he was going to be sworn into office and that was a Sunday and Zachary Taylor would not be inaugurated on the Lord's Day. So on March 4th, that Sunday, President Pope resigned his office and for one day in 1849, from noon on Sunday to noon on Monday when Taylor was to be sworn in, a man named David Rice Atchison, a senator from Missouri, was president for one day. He was asked later, well, what did you do? He said, "I went to bed." He has had several long days in the Senate and he was tired, so he spent most of the day in the bed. Now, I cannot help but think that if I were given the opportunity to be president for one day, I would have done something. So how sad is it to sleep when there are important things to do? First Samuel 14 is the story of King Saul who was appointed king, first king of Israel. And he inherited a very serious crisis, the Philistines. They were basically ruling the land that the Israelites lived in. They were wreaking havoc on Israel. They would raid their cities, take whatever they want. The Israelites lived in fear at all the time. Jonathan, Saul's son, he had enough. And at one point, he attacked the Philistine outpost. And this enraged the Philistines to the point that they brought their entire army together to come against the Israelites. So Saul was trying to pull the Israelite army together and these guys were petrified of the Philistines. They were hiding out in caves. The scripture says they were hiding out in holes in the ground. And so Saul had just a few people to pull together. So when it came right down to this scene of the battle, this mighty Philistine armies there and here's Saul with a few band of soldiers, and Saul did what he did best: nothing. But Jonathan couldn't take it anymore. And if you read, beginning of verse 13, and I won't read it all to you, but the story, I paraphrase is this, is that Jonathan said, "The Lord is with us and I'm going to go do something." There were only two swords in all of Israel. Saul had one and Jonathan had one. So Jonathan takes his armor bearer and they head out to this place where the Philistine army is up on a high place. And they come there and he says, "We're going to attack them, just the two of them." And he said, "If they ask us to come up, that'll be the sign that the Lord wants us to come up and attack them." Well, they get there and the Philistine army said, "Well, look who's coming out of their holes." And they really started trash talking, kind of like the Olympics here lately. So Jonathan turns to his armor bearer and hands him his only sword, his only weapon, because he has to climb hand over foot up this bluff to get up there. But he doesn't, because he believes it's the right thing to do. So he climbs up there and when he gets up there, the Lord's with him and the armor bearer comes up behind him and they wipe out 20 men in just a few seconds. And it scares the army so bad, the Lord shakes the ground and the entire Philistine army is then overtaken. And they overtook that army that day, because one guy decided, "I'm going to do something." Jonathan's father Saul gave up leadership responsibility when he decided to do nothing instead of conquering in the name of the Lord. Jonathan's spirit cannot maintain, it must march. I believe his spirit can teach us today some very critical lessons. That maybe the most important lesson to learn is that we ought to be doing something. It seems that most churches and even organizations, maybe even like ours today, have given into the idea that most members are going to be side liners. The ones who sit in the stands and watch are very few people, do something. The world is full of side liners. When you're a sideline, you're very, you are very good in your opinion of seeing what the problem is. And worse is when you decide it's your role to be a critic. I've learned something, that critics don't know all they think they know and they rarely see a critic do anything. Could it be that God wants us to talk less and act more? I think so. Here's the difference, the spirit of Saul says we should just wait unless God has clearly set a path for us, but the spirit of Jonathan says, "We must go, we must march." God does not call us to sit back and do nothing. He wants us to march, not just maintain. As I think about the future of our college system, I have a really simple observation. Our future will depend on whether we have the spirit of Saul or whether we have the spirit of Jonathan. What spirit do we have? Are we willing to do something that is right, even when it's hard and maybe even if it turns out wrong? Jonathan decided to go do something that he did without a guarantee of overwhelming success. Jonathan didn't know. He was certain God wanted the Philistines removed. He was certain he was moving in line with God's purpose, but he was not certain if such a movement would come at great personal risk. He didn't know what would happen. Oftentimes, as we face things, we all want to live risk-free. I think it's better to live free to risk. And as we lead this system going forward in the coming years, we have tremendous opportunities to do great things for the state of Alabama. I appreciate the servant leadership of this Board of Trustees and I appreciate serving with you. Would you pray with me? Father, thank you for the opportunity that we have to be leaders and be servants in your community. Father, I'm thankful for each one here, for the trustees and those here at this meeting and for every role that has played. And I pray, Father, you would grant us great wisdom. I pray that you would grant us wisdom in making decisions that would best benefit those whom we serve. Father, be with us and we ask all this in your son's precious name. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
... to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Blake. Thank you, Crystal. Ms. Alker, would you please call the board?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Present.
Mr. Ron Fantroy?
Present.
Mrs. Susan Foyd?
Present.
Mr. Frank Caldwell?
Present.
Mrs. Crystal Brown?
Present.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Present.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Present.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Present.
Mrs. Mary Scott Hunter?
Here.
Governor Bell. You have four.
Next is item four, approval of the agenda. I've been presented with two items that are going to require us to modify and amend the agenda, to add two additional items which will become item 7A1 and 7A2. And Cawker State Community College will be changed to 7A3 for the construction item and for the, item two will become item four, Alabama Community College System Allocation of Industry Certification Initiative Funds. I would like to amend, entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add 7A1, which would be a vote to grant personnel leave to Dr. Heinrich. And second, obviously, 7A2 would be a vote to appoint an acting chancellor. Is there a motion about that?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Oh, sorry. Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion by the trustees? Any questions? There being none, those in favor of amending the agenda to add action items 7A1 and 2 and change existing 1 and 2 to 3 and 4, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next is item five, which would be approval of minutes of the July 13, 2016 meeting of trustees, which was held in Montgomery. The trustees have received these well in advance of this meeting and had a chance to review those minutes. At this time, I'll give the chair a moment to motion to approve the minutes of the July 13 meeting.
I want to do it more.
There's been a motion by Mr. Caldwell to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor approving the minutes of the July 13, 2016 meeting, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Minutes are approved. Next, item six, public comment. Ms. Alker, has anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir.
We'll move on to the action items. Item 7A1 would be to address a request by Chancellor Heinrich for personal and medical leave. Yesterday, I received a letter from Chancellor Heinrich requesting this. And to basically give you a summary of this, the letter is formally requests a leave of absence from my duties as chancellor of the Alabama Community College System directly related to personal health issues I am experiencing. As you are aware, I've been out on sick leave for several weeks and I have recently been advised that my recovery will take much longer than I ever anticipated. Pursuant to the authority invested in the ACCS Board of Trustees and in observance of the Board's bylaws and improved policies, I'm requesting the Board's approval for a leave of absence due to my medical concerns. I will use my earned accumulated leave to accommodate this request. Is there a motion in response to this letter to grant this leave? Motion to approve the request. Okay. Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fantroy. Discussion. All the trustees have been given a copy of this letter and I received it very late yesterday and distributed it to you. We're all very concerned about the chancellor's condition and it is my hope and prayer that he have a complete and full recovery and that we see him very soon in his full capacity as chancellor. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor of granting this leave as requested in the letter from Chancellor Heinrich, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 7A2, based on the chancellor's absence, during his absence in previous weeks, there's been so many situations that have come up, it's been difficult for him to handle, be handled properly by the office and by the system due to his absence. And so I feel that it's appropriate that we select an acting chancellor. This is different from interim and we would hope that this would be short term, but I think it's very necessary for us to continue to provide the proper leadership for the system, for the state, for all the citizens. I want to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for Jimmy Baker to act as the acting chancellor in Chancellor Heinrich's absence.
One nation under God, a motion to appoint Dr. Jimmy Baker as acting chancellor, is there a second? Also, a motion. Second by Mr. Smith. Okay. Discussion. Before I have discussion, Dr. Baker, would you be willing to serve this capacity? And if you might want to go to the lectern, if you have anything you'd like to say or say what would give you better?
Well, if you know, I first had some second thoughts about this. But I'm willing to do what the board pleases that I do. I'm not good at going to bed and sleeping. Like, I think there's so much that can be done and must be done in the system that we need to move forward. And with your help and support, I will continue in that process as diligently as I can. I'm humbled by the opportunity. I will, I will, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Is Roger Baker here? Roger, is this appropriate, what we're doing, process we're following right now?
Oh, yes, sir.
Very good. Just want to confirm that with you. Any further discussion from the trustees? We have a motion on the floor to appoint Dr. Jimmy Baker as acting chancellor of Alabama Community College System. There being no further discussion, we have a motion in second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Dr. Baker, you're now acting chancellor. Would you please come up here and act as our secretary, sir? The next action item we have is 7A3, Cawker State Community College Construction and Renovation Projects and Issuance of Bonds. As the trustees know, we thoroughly reviewed this at our July work session, had a complete presentation done by an architectural firm, had some additional committee meetings in regard to this. Mr. Smith is committing any other questions?
No, sir. We met with the architect at our last work session and we're comfortable with the plan going forward and the expediency of the project and the deed, so that recommendation is ready to be filed.
Is there a motion to approve item 7A3, Cawker Construction and Renovations?
I want a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brown. Any discussion?
I would just say I appreciate his work and his committee. I know this is a pretty significant project and all the work that it was done, the understanding was very valuable and made it clear what needed to be done and I think we appreciate that.
I appreciate Mr. McAnally's viewpoint, the comments that he made last month by teleconferencing because of the experience that he has and that Mr. Davis has and Mr. Smith and some of our other trustees on construction and engineering is invaluable to us and we appreciate your input and your affirming the decision we're making. Any further discussion or any comments by the trustees? We have before us item Construction and Renovation Project, Initiuance of Bonds for Cawker State Community College. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Item 7A3 is approved. Item 7A4, Alabama Community College System Allocation, 2015-2016 Industry Certification Initiative Funds. Is there a motion to approve this item? Got a motion from Mr. McAnally. Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on item 7A4? There being none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Item 7A4 is approved. The next move on to Executive Leg on Public Information, Section 8, Section, item 8A8 is the realignment of Alabama, is a phase of realignment for Alabama Southern Community College, Jefferson Davis Community College, and Cawker State Community College. This will include the approval of name, mission statement, main campus and campus instructional sites and service area to propose consolidated institution. Is there a motion to approve this item? Motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Caldwell. The trustees were presented with this extensive information, well-done information, if I might add, concerning the realignment of these three institutions. The new name that was approved by committee from all sides, had community input, will be Coastal Alabama Community College for the new college. We also have a mission statement and the approval of the main administration of the campus to be in vain. Is there any further discussion on this item?
Chairman, I'd just like to say likewise, the information provided to us recently was very insightful on how this process gets done. And in fact, I would say might serve as a model as we pursue these realignments going forward. The minutes from all of the committee meetings that we were able to read and understand how we came to this over an eight to nine month process was really invaluable from a trustee perspective, helps us answer questions that we receive from public officials. So it, I recognize that we had to go through this, to learn it. It's too bad we couldn't have known all of this and had a lot of work prior to the beginning. I thank you for the work, Dr. Branson, that you led and it's great work and I appreciate the way we are with it now.
I was smart enough, many years ago, to employ people who were smarter than me and who worked harder than I do.
Thank you, Mr. McAnally. Does anyone else have anything else? Dr. Branson, would you like to say anything or you think you could?
Well, my voice is very weak. What I would like to have to do, to go over to the board, I've been in the hospital for two weeks and through the miracle of physicians, that their God-given yes and their scientific learning and a whole lot of prayer, I'm here before you today. I lost 20 pounds and my voice keeps coming from the void. In my absence during this critical phase, these folks here stood up, stepped forward and they did the work that we're so kind to acknowledge. We're excited. We're excited about everything. From day one, and I've met with over 60 different groups and individuals to inform them and ask questions about the merger and what was going on. From that day one, I told them there will be a new college with a new name, because I thought, I thought it was important, because each of our institutions, our alumni and constituencies are very proud of the Cawker State name and the Alabama Southern name and the Jeff Davis name. But through a lot of discussion and question, I can tell you that the vote could change our name. With a vote with people from all of the representative colleges, students, faculty, community, and out of 50 something names, this name was unanimous. This name was unanimous. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to recognize those who did such work. I think it will represent us well and reflect on our part of the country and is rather unique. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
We're so glad that your recovery is doing so well. We're thankful for that and we're thankful for your very able staff that you were wise enough to select and over many years and that they've been, they've brought to bear the experience and the instruction that they accumulated over many years and it shows.
Now, I'd like to, excuse me, you get my age, you do this thing. I would like to introduce to you the smartest person I've met. And from December 26, I whipped Peggy Duck and she's got to give to me. She's here today because she will not let me get out of her eyes. She has healed me and nursed me and in ever respect, she has been my helpmate, my bride and my love. Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you, Roger. So good to have you here, Peggy. As Dr. Branson says, woe do any elected official if Peggy ever decides to run against him in Alabama County, because she's so well thought of and highly regarded. And I know she's taken great care of you, given you great guidance through this and that means so much when we're all sick and also makes us think about our chancellor and we hope he has a full recovery, is getting the same kind of care and that God will watch over him in the same way he watched over you. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor of item 8A1, which is this approval of the name, mission statement, main campus? name, mission statement, main campus, campus instructional sites and service area for the realignment with Alabama Southern Community College, Jefferson Davis Community College, and Faulkner State Community College, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Item eight, A1 is approved. Item nine, Chancellor's report. I expect you to have anything to say. I'd like to welcome everyone that's here, as I did at the beginning, we appreciate your presence, but I saw Senator Arthur Orr earlier. Senator Orr, thank you for your presence. We just appreciate your support for our system, for our board trustees and just your great leadership in our state and that cannot be unwrested. Are there any other members of the legislature here that I have not seen? We'd like to recognize you if you're here. If there are any local leaders that I'm not aware of, thank you for being here, we appreciate your presence and once again, I can't say enough great things about your community. I don't get up here very often, I'm down on the coast where we have to keep watch for hurricanes down there and don't make it up this way very often, but you all have a great part of the state and it's just a great economic engine up here and we're just looking for bigger, better things here from California. I'd like to acknowledge that one of our board members has been appointed by the governor to a new committee for the Office of Education, it's the Committee of Education Workforce Statistics Advisory Board. And we needed to, we have, it was representative meeting for the board trustees and Governor Bentley has appointed Milton Davis to be our representative and Milton, thank you for serving that capacity. I appreciate it so very much and I know the rest of the board does too. You're busy just as everyone else is and this is one more thing for you to do, but thank you for your willingness to do that. We've had several items come before the board at work sessions in the past, past several months and at this time, I'd like to address those and refer them to the appropriate committees. The first one is a review of compensation schedule in the system. You know, is the demand for advanced career technical education, career path increases the disparity between the salaries that the students are making once they're out and employed and that of their instructor, that disparity seems to get greater and greater. And I believe that that's just a key issue that we need to review as a board and I've spoken with Chairman McInally and I would like, I'm requesting that his Finance and Economic Committee take home this issue for a full review and draw on all the resources of our staff to carefully think this through and if needed, draw on outside resources for analysis and consultation. This is very important and we need to attract hot-march instructors and we need to keep the ones that we got there. Would you like to speak to this in any way?
I would just offer that our committee did meet for about an hour and a half this morning and this is something that we did talk about and we're excited about the opportunity and take the challenge.
Very good. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to say that the department will provide support, lend whatever assistance you need, if you're ready.
The next item that I'd like for one of our committees to review is that of the Alabama Community College System Service Areas. The offerings of courses and study via internet, the distance education have become more, much more relevant than they were many years ago. Online education is, it just seems to be a way of the future and it's a way, you know, very common today. The students are more reliable, you know, more students today have reliable transportation or able to communicate. And so I'd like for the Policy Committee, Chairman Fantroy, he has already agreed to this, but if his committee will take this on and review the Alabama Community College Service Areas and get it a thoughtful review and draw on any resources that are necessary to give this a thorough review and come back with a recommendation to the board. In addition, the tenure, tenure policy within our system, I would request that the Policy Committee also make a thorough review of tenure and come back with a recommendation to our board.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Policy Subcommittee, we'll take on that request to review those two items.
Mr. Fantroy, thank you for your willingness to do this and my thanks to your committee, your willingness to take this on and we look forward to hearing back from y'all after you have time to thoroughly state with us.
And we will provide whatever support we need from the department.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Y'all pardon my dead air when I'm in a new environment. It takes me a while sometimes to make sure I just don't forget anything. I'd like to announce that the college has set up a tour, all board members and college presidents, all board members and college presidents are invited to join Dr. Caldwell on a tour of the building and afterwards board the bus located at the rear of the building for a quick windshield tour to announce. We look forward to that. Our next meeting will be our work session at 1:00 PM this afternoon. We'll be back in the same location, the same Health Sciences Building, room 109. And then the next Board of Trustees meeting will be next month, September fourteenth Let's see, is there anyone here from SACS today? Just want to make sure, anybody from our certifying authorities are recognized. Okay. Any? Yes, Crystal. Senator Orr, would you have anything you'd like to say at this time?
Well, you caught me, doctor. I'm sitting here, this is the nature of my life, writing a letter to each, to you as chairman and to each board member, but thanking you for your service to our state and for the diligence that you're having, you're showing today by making the tough choices given consolidation and how that was not an easy lift, but you're fulfilling the dream that I know the legislature and many others had for post-secondary by having an appointed board come together to make these very difficult decisions, but necessary for our state. And I just want to thank each one of you and also in my letter, I thank those of you from the southern end of the state for making the long journey up to the north and we really are honored by your presence and appreciate your being here. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator. Any other trustees or? Mary Scott?
I'll not be able, colleagues, I'll not be able to make the work session today. We commit your prayers for our vote tomorrow. I'll be headed to Montgomery to vote on our next state superintendent. This is more perfect for a work session, but I also wanted to let the trustees know that I've been able to gain some additional understanding lately about transitional education and developmental education. I think once we get the transition done, we have some real good opportunities to collaboratively tackle that problem from the K-12 side as well as the community college side and I'm real excited about that, so I wanted to raise that to your awareness and I wish you well in your, in your work session today and I'll see you next one.
We wish you and the rest of your board all the best as you continue to deliberate and tomorrow, you know, we'll take a vote on your super. That's a very, very thing. We appreciate your leadership to promote the state of education.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Once again, I'd like to thank Dr. Jimmy Baker for accepting our appointment as acting chancellor. I believe we're so fortunate to have someone of Dr. Baker's experience and good judgment to fill in in the chancellor's absence. Thank you again, Dr. Baker.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else on the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. We stand adjourned.